Oh, thank you, Michelle. You're welcome. Okay, so no public comment on non-agenda items. Committee and department reports, as always, are on the side table and will be included in their entirety with the minutes. Correspondence, Michelle, do we have any correspondence? Three, two. Hi, Professor. This is all we need to go. From RSVP, just thanking the township for sponsoring their thirty-third annual volunteer recognition event that took place in June. It recognizes many of the AmeriCorps senior RSVP program volunteers. Thank you. And with that, we're ready for our public hearings for tonight. Did you want us to do B first? To give Anthony some more time?
Uh, yeah, that's doesn't give everyone enough.
Sure. Is there a motion to open the public hearing for fireworks?
Motion.
There.
Any questions? All in favor? Okay, so just by way of explanation, in twenty seventeen, Pennsylvania adjusted their fireworks laws and expanded the sale and use of fireworks to consumer fireworks. Since that time, there were numerous complaints. So Act seventy-four of twenty twenty-two, which was signed in July and effective September ninth of twenty twenty-two, had some changes to it, which I'm sure Pat will take us through a few of them, which enabled the township to do a revised ordinance. For example, it clarified the hundred-and-fifty-foot clearance was from any structure, even if the owner owned it and some other things, but I'll turn that over to Pat.
Sure, so what this ordinance does is incorporates a number of the provisions that are set forth in the statute that and that just took us through, but more importantly, I guess, for Middle Smithfield Township, you now will have two separate designated types of fireworks, one being display, one being consumer. Consumer fireworks being those fireworks that, you know, your typical eighteen-plus individual can purchase from the fireworks stores throughout the state of Pennsylvania. Some of the things, there is a provision here, use of consumer fireworks, and it goes through certain restrictions on the use of consumer fireworks, and those restrictions are taken primarily from the state statute. The probably the ones, I think, and I mentioned, consumer fireworks within hundred-and-fifty feet of a building occupied structure or vehicle is not permitted. Consumer fireworks on any property owned or operated by the township, including parks, parking lots, streets, sidewalks, and rights of wear permitted. And consumer fireworks between the hours of ten PM and ten AM is prohibited, except for on July second, third, and fourth, and December thirty-first, when they are permitted until one AM the following day. And there's a provision in there that when Fourth of July falls on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, that it basically goes to the following Friday or Saturday. And then there's separate provisions regarding display fireworks. Display fireworks are the fireworks that you need a permit for from the township. Those are those fireworks that are that you have to be an experienced issue with a license or registered with the appropriate agency within the state of Pennsylvania. And those, again, those provisions are taken primarily from the state statute as it was amended. And there is requirement for bonds and liability insurance associated with the use of those display fireworks. Does the board want me to go through a little bit more in detail? Or is that sufficient for purposes of the season?
I think it's fine for tonight unless anyone has any questions here or on Zoom. Does anybody have any question?
Okay, so with that, are there any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I think you can close your public hearing if you wanted to and consider adopting the ordinance.
All right, are you making motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance two thirty-nine?
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay. Want to phone a friend?
Well, you said it's only seven fifteen, but I could start it and not.
Yeah, we could do cables, we could do these other things.
Okay, yeah, it shouldn't be a matter of violence.
You showed up too late, we should have checked the lights.
All right, Mike, could you give us the treasurer's report?
Sure, there's a motion from our general count, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-six cents.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right. Motion from our sheriff count, seventeen thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Well, second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right. And the motion from our dog count, three thousand, twenty-three dollars and forty cents.
Sure.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
All right. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Okay, Pat, solicitor's report?
Um, the one I'm listing under my report is the Solar Farm proposed ordinance. Pursuant to the discussion at your last meeting, we have now forwarded that draft zoning ordinance off to the Township Planning Commission and County Planning Commission for review. Pursuant to the MPC before you advertise or hold the hearing, adopt that ordinance, you have to provide ample time. I think it's thirty days to the county of the Township Planning Commission to review and provide comment.
And the county planning commission postponed their meeting this month, canceled their meeting this month. So we'll wait till September then.
Okay. Okay, so that's been sent out. There's nothing else listed under my report. I do have, I think there's a couple resolutions on the agenda tonight that I might have some comments on, but other than that, unless there's something from the board that made, I think that's all I have.
Okay, engineers' report? Thank you, Pat.
Yeah, no report for tonight.
No old business that brings us to new business. Mark, I think you have something.
Make a motion to appoint Sean.
There.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? All right.
Having to make a motion to appoint Lori McCrory as the assistant.
There.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, and I think you have something else now, let's see.
Public Arts Council?
Yes.
I have a motion to waive the fees for Public Arts Council to have a banner up from August eleventh through the twenty-ninth.
Well, second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, Mike, I think you have.
Make a motion to adopt resolution eight dash two, twenty twenty-three dash one, which is the supplemental appropriations, AKA revised twenty twenty-three budget for our general fund.
Thanks.
Second, motion second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, that brings us to joiner D. Mark, I think that's you.
Make a motion to adopt resolution zero eight, twenty twenty-two, that to joiner D. for Michael Park Jack and Michelle A. Jack.
There.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right.
That's simple, okay. Here. Unless it's a public comment now.
Yes, so the zoning officer that works directly for the township now, or are they coming from an outside?
They're still from SFM. So it's just changing personnel from SFM.
Okay.
Judy will still be involved in any kind of litigation that we have ongoing. She's still zoning officer. She's just not the appointed zoning officer for NFT.
Okay.
Judy makes it her on your hearing.
Yeah.
Judy.
Okay. Okay, but you want to tell me the company?
Yes.
Let me find it.
Yes.
I'm back on the track by Chicago. Yeah. Turkey Hill, short times going north and south, long times going east and west. The left turn, arrow sorrow.
Yeah, we do have signal services alerted to that beyond us, but but they are on that picture. That's all I can say right now.
While the person here has to look at the one that that the Foxmore family school.
Okay. Yeah, we have, actually, we got it on board.
Yeah.
What, probably a month ago?
No, actually, probably about a week and a half ago. No, I sent it out, I'm going to have a good session tomorrow.
But there's work that we have to have, the vendors deals, some work that we have to do, but they basically, every year they punch out all the lights early in the second. They give us a list who has to be repaired, either by the vendor or us, whatever, but so we have not gotten that rough yet, but we will.
Mission accomplished.
Yeah, well, sure, Anthony was peaked in.
Okay, and we can get, we can go into this order if we'd like.
Unless there's any other public comment from anyone? All right.
How's progress coming on that bridge at the country club?
The precast is set, the concrete that goes in between the precast is going forward today. They're backfilling either end. And hopes that starting next week on Monday, we'll backfill and bring it to grade throughout next week and then pay, excuse me, pay the following week. So we'll be open for school. That's one.
I hope they're by the end of the month.
Yeah, we, yeah, we are optimistic that we will be done the Friday before school opens. They are gone.
Seventy-nine times, that's perfect.
Just about to make the motion to adjourn.
All right, can we go back to eighty-eight? Public hearing. You're making motion to open the public hearing.
Sure.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
All right.
So this is a public hearing. The public hearing is for a conditional use application of the Mount Nebo Apartments LLC for the property located at twenty-nine Mount Nebo Road, East Strasburg, Pennsylvania, consisting of Monroe County PIN numbers zero nine, seven, three, two, three, zero, zero, eight, two, six, zero, five, two. And the applicant in accordance with the zoning ordinance is applied for conditional use approval to proceed with an apartment complex dwelling use on the property. It's located within the C-one zoning district of the township, which allows for apartment dwelling units by conditional use. This has been advertised pursuant to the MPC and the zoning warrants of the Middle Smithfield Township. And this is a public hearing, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to submit and admit certain exhibits for the township, and then we're going to hand it over to the applicant. Okay, so what we'll mark as township one is a copy of the conditional use application filed by the applicant on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. It consists of nine pages. What will mark as township two is a copy of the July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, corresponds from the township to the applicant notifying the applicant of the public hearing for the application. What will mark as township three is a copy of the proof of publication for this evening's public hearing. What will mark as township four is a copy of the certificate of posting filled out by the code enforcement officer evidencing that the property was properly posted pursuant to the MPC. With that, are there any objections to township one through four?
None.
Seeing none, township one through four will be admitted. I do notice that there is, there are a number of individuals in the audience. I suspect one of them will be testifying or at least presenting some narrative and testimony for the board. Which will that be?
So Sal, Sal V A T O R E. I A Z O, C A, I A Z, C O, from head over H A N A, we are engineering.
And you'll be testifying?
Uh, yes, I'll be there.
All right, you want to swear?
Sure, raise your hand. Just to do some square or affirm each other, the whole group, and nothing but the group. Thank you.
The only thing before we get started, I'll ask, I was remiss before, is there anyone in the audience that would request party status in this case? Seeing none, I'll let the record be. Well, the applicant is a party, clearly. But so seeing none, let the record reflect, no one requests the party status in this case. And I will actually add one more exhibit because I believe it's going to be pertinent to some of the conditions. There was, this is a second phase of the Mount Nebo Apartments, and there was a conditional use decision entered by the township previously for the existing use on the property, and I know I have it. We're going to mark that as township five, which was the prior two thousand nineteen conditional use decision from the township. Well, as I look for that, if you want to start, that's.
Sure, well, actually, I have a document which I think will be helpful to have on the record as well. It's the original. For this application. That includes all of the conditions of the previous initial approval to the ninety-six unit apartment.
So if you want to mark that as an exhibit, you can. I wasn't planning on it, but you can if you'd like. And I did find the prior decision, which we're marking as township five, and that's the March twenty-second, two thousand nineteen conditional use decision for the existing apartments on the property. And if Joe, any objections to township five?
No.
And township five will be admitted as well. All right, with that.
With that, we have all the documents that are necessary to date. Inception of, you have the calculation for the density. You don't have the.
You have to mark that. Sure.
As applicant one, I guess. It's part of our application.
Yeah. I guess the question we'd be, is we have a plan as well, so does that fall under the application or was it either township one or whatever? That not encompass the township? That that page was not in the application I have, okay?
Can I see the copy of the I P H? It was print one.
And there's additional documents that you would have admitted into the record in addition to those.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, so this has our the application, the township's application for the conditional use, and then it has also our our statement of intent for the project. Okay, so it doesn't have to play it then.
I'm sorry, so it doesn't have to.
The plan, the conditional use. So I don't have a copy of that on hand, and I figured you guys would. Yeah. I think we play the end of that into our exhibit that the proven to for the applicant.
All right, so applicant one is a front and back document. It looks like it's the filled out.
The section of your subdivision, like your exhibits.
And this is for us? This copy is for us?
Yeah.
All right, what I'm going to mark, we'll mark this as applicant one. Yes. Okay. And what will mark is applicant two. They want to, is a three-page plan set titled Site Plan Mount Nebo Two Apartments dated June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I think all our housekeeping items are taken care of. Would now be a good time to make a presentation of our plan. What we're proposing here, along the top of the page, you're going to see the units that are recently constructed for Mount Nebo Apartments. That project was ninety-six unit apartment complex. Existing driveway is here. That's also shared access for additional property in the back here, which that access has been maintained for other construction process, and it is now currently open for reuse by that property. The applicant has recently moved one class here. So purchased this probably three acre parcel that has been, that was previously surrounded by the the thirty-seven acre parcel that was developed as part of Mount Nebo Apartments. And what that did is it gives some extra developable land for thirty additional units. The parking we have is in compliance with your zoning ordinance, which means it's in compliance with the ITG manual says what your zoning ordinance references for parking. That's one point seven spaces per unit, and we have more than the required amount of parking that's required. In addition to the apartments are available for the ninety-sixths. Um, the units have broken up into five little towers, there's six apartments in each tower, two on the first floor, two on the second floor, and two on the third floor. Identical, they'll be identical in every way to the buildings. Your judgment engineer had a few comments, which we addressed some of the comments that are in that letter. One of the concerns was we are approaching on a wetland buffer here with the corner of the building. And, you know, previously our impact went within the twenty-five foot inner buffer. What we've done is we've proposed a retaining wall around the corner of the building here that will keep us out of, at least the inner buffer. We will still be disturbing the outer buffer, but it may be just a retaining wall and some grading that's required, and the rest will be returned to vegetation. Another one of the comments was that it's, this is going to be a emergency access for the project. It was going to be gated off. However, your engineer recommended that, because there there will be too many driveways and quick succession along Mount Nebo Road. It would be three driveways for single use, really. His feeling, and we show that on this plan, is that a fire truck can easily access this parking lot by navigating a turn in from the existing driveway. And then back up straight out into this area here. That was, that will be constructed as part of this development, the ninety-six unit development, and then come back out in that direction. Additionally, really, there was probably reach, you know, from the existing parking lot, and it's only the eighteen. I haven't mentioned your eighty-two feet length, so I believe that it's the though we have it at the recommendation of your engineer, I think it's a better plan, it has it'll create less issues here, even though the initial scheme is for emergency purposes. This will be a better way for that to access the property, I think, other than having a HOX box and have an extra gate there and extra driveway. The pavement, similar to the rest of the property, will be purpose pavement. This is in a no detention zone, which means they don't want us to detain anywhere, they want us to get it out and get it off the property as quickly as possible, so all the stormwater will drain into, onto the for the purpose pavement and infiltrate into the ground. And whatever doesn't, we'll just be allowed to go straight to the wellin that is next to the project. Water, we have a water service from PA American Water, luckily enough that we were in their service areas, we don't have to worry about the the process of getting added into the service area like we did for the ninety-six unit. Sewer, we need to get a submission into the sewer authority. Ben mentioned that there's some discussion that needs to be added. There may need to be some improvements made to the existing pump station that will install for the development, plus a few other. I think the Wendy's was one of them and.
I'm sorry, you think we won?
The pump station that was constructed for this project and the Wendy's and others surrounding residential parcels in cases that are, they're just all that systems. The, I guess what was built into that pump station were those units and this, and so this is visible thirty, while it's capable of handling it, it was able ability for those other uses to tie into the future needed. So there would just be some analysis required that my client would be happy to pay for. They were to make sure that that, make sure that that competition is adequate to the annual digital study wasn't in the thirty. I think I covered all the bases. Yeah, I guess I, you haven't answered any questions that you had on the record.
I'm sorry for that.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Well, the plan was submitted to the fire chief for review yet. He hasn't received any comment or responses from that yet, but there are also, I didn't mention this before, but there are fire hydrants on the busy property at two locations. And this will be the type of those. As there would also be places to tie in right on the, right on the outside of the building. In your engineer's review letter, you mentioned that there are work conditions that were adequate for the ninety-six unit development. And you recommended that those same condition be applied to this development as part of the visual improvement. And we're happy, we're happy with that. I think the planning commission made the regulations with one exception.
Yeah, the one exception being what I believe is condition eight in those twenty nineteen twenty nineteen decision regarding the requirement that like the evergreen tree slash fence visual barrier that was proposed along the, what used to, or still is technically the property line between, you know, where the storage units are, and then the the former or existing single-family residential lot that they are now proposing these apartments on. So with the proposed lot consolidation and converting this to a similar use, the planning commission was comfortable with the removal of that condition since the need for that buffer and visual barrier wasn't required with what's proposed.
Does the board have any questions? I know it's not part of conditional sound, but where is the garbage coming from? Are you going to, sorry, I have another garbage pad. I know it's not part of this.
Um. We do the, the interesting, have enough to handle the second a second dumpster if it's required, if it's necessary.
And that might be something that comes up during land development?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's a condition regarding it as well, that I think it's. And there's a condition regarding it as well, that I think it's like the last condition also speaks to the need to. Screen any dumpster area. So even if an additional one were to be required, then same. Same condition could apply.
Is this a separate parcel? From the larger parcel or is it combined?
It it is, uh but for purposes of this development, we will be combining it. Ninety-six unit of the uh property. And so our our uh our calculations for the density were done based on the. Uh combined lot.
Hmm.
And we will be able to develop one hundred fifty-five, I believe, is our uh units and we're. To one twenty-six, uh you know, with with this proposed thirty additions.
Yeah, I'm gonna. Does the board have any, I have some questions, I just wanna make sure the board asked theirs first. Yeah, alright, so uh I did see. And I guess the file, there is a deed in here, is this deed to the parcel that's being joined or consolidated to the existing Mountain Evo lots?
Yes.
Would you wanna mark this as an exhibit? Applicant.
Um yes, like.
Well, mark this as applicant three. And uh you did reference, uh you have approval from PA American for the water.
Right.
Uh are you familiar with the September seventh, twenty twenty-two letter from PA American?
Yes.
Uh would you like to mark that as an exhibit?
Uh if if you think it should be submitted, we can we can submit that, but that's typically taken care of in the development process anyway.
It's up to you, if you wanna include that in this or not.
Yeah, I can, please, thank you.
So you wanna mark that as applicant four?
Yes.
I guess technically that plan differs from the original application one, right, so that. Be included as a second exhibit?
No, I want I want the current. Plan that's being proposed and is that what's been marked as applicant two, which is the one that is dated June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three?
So this was submitted, this is what was submitted originally, we've we've come up with some. With this plan to give to the fire chief to see if they're okay with. The revised layout and we'll still leave in comments from the uh from the fire.
So what's on the is what's on the easel, is that different from applicant two?
It is.
Okay, we want the updated plan as I suspect we want an updated plan as exhibit to the conditional use here, so is that the updated plan?
It is, um.
And why?
We'll be able to switch this out for the uh.
Well, we are, why don't we do this? Uh we are up to applicant. Now we're, uh next one will be applicant five. Do you have a copy of the updated plan tonight?
I can give you this copy, um.
Alright, so what we're gonna do.
Any questions or? Take care.
What we're gonna mark is applicant. Five is the updated. Plan on the easel and what's the date of that plan?
Uh it's dated June nineteenth.
That's the same date as the other one, is there a revision date? Um.
You don't have to change.
Okay. Is there one sheet on that?
There's, well, it's sheet three or three, but there's only one sheet in this.
Okay. Uh well, we'll start.
I'm sure for time we don't have.
I asked. Uh is it?
I can make a hand notation on there.
Why don't you do that and we'll also mark that as applicant five?
We'll do today's date as revision.
And is it your testimony to this board that that applicant five is the current plan that the township should be considering uh when reviewing the application?
It is.
Okay.
Uh the changes to that with the retaining wall and no emergency exit?
Yes, and you showed the turning radius of the fire.
The building shifted at all, I know that there was question, but but right away and the front yard setback.
Yes, the building did shift about five or sixteen to the east um. Because the, you know, previously we were using the uh right away as it uh appeared on the uh Eagle property. But uh. We're detaching it off the center line of the road, which moved it over uh over by the beach and where the engine, so the right away. Both back, which both back to the twenty-five step back, which moved our building below by every now, and so we have a very, very small corner of. The building has including the uh the one on buffer, but it's.
I'm terrified.
Do me that.
And just so I'm clear. The access. Um. To the proposed. Phase two of Mountain Evo apartments on the Mountain Evo Road, that's an emergency access, proposed as emergency access. Hence the lot. Not about.
Right, well, the 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 reason for. The change to this plan is to eliminate that access altogether and use this as the access into the property. This was only an emergency access that was going to get it, but but uh it was recommended that we remove that.
So on ex- exhibit applicant five, there is no more access onto Mountain Evo Road.
Correct, that's been removed.
And you're gonna only be using the access that that goes into the existing parking lot.
Correct.
Alright. And this is for thirty additional apartment units?
Yes.
In one structure?
Correct.
Okay, and proposed new parking spaces fifty-five?
Right.
And I think you testified a little bit about the July twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. Review letter from Gilmore and Associates. Is the applicant agreeable uh with all those conditions or comments in that review letter?
Yes.
And you're agreeable to all of the prior conditions in the prior conditional use decision for March of twenty nineteen, uh with the exception of. Uh the condition relating to the applicant providing evergreen trees and or fences a barrier between the property line and Route two and nine.
Yes.
And you did, I believe you did testify, but the applicant is agreeable uh to being responsible for any and all costs associated with the re-rating, redesigning, or modification of the pump station necessary. To account for the additional capacity associated with the this use?
Yes.
Uh. Okay. Couple other items, um are you, you did have a prior conditional use plan before this board, right? And that was approved back in March of twenty nineteen?
Yes, that's okay.
And after that, you did also have a land development plan? And you proceeded with land development plan because the the apartments are there, correct?
Correct.
Uh are you aware that there is some outstanding uh reimbursement old reimburse goals and balance due to the township associated with those prior plans?
No, we're uh we're not aware of that.
Um uh if the township were to include as a condition of the conditional use in this case for the applicant uh property owner to to come up to date. And pay all the outstanding uh fees that are due under the prior plan, would that be an agreeable condition?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. And obviously, similar to the prior conditional use, you understand that you have to come back before this board for for a subdivision and land development application. Associated with the actual improvements that you're putting on a property, yes, and you're agreeable to that?
Yes.
Anything else from the board at this point?
Phase one is complete.
Yeah, uh one thing that was in our plans that's not confirmed currently is the storage units, and the reason is there's right now, there's. This will have or this will soil that uh we'd like to use.
You know, destruction of the uh area this year. Other than. Completing those or any conditions from phase that have not been met, I'm worried.
Uh the only other. There's also the trail for the same reason, because there's uh bring out topsoil stockpile where the there was supposed to be a trail constructed.
Right.
Back to uh back to the fourth portion of the property and uh a small bridge constructed across the stream. That will also be done uh once we are able to move the dirt on bottom of this, so. There's a lot of minutes. Um that and the screen. Between the two buildings, so those are the only improvements that are made for Mountain Evo Apartments, the ninety-sixth.
And and when do you anticipate completing that?
Uh well, there was not a decent discussion and uh you know, the planning commission agreed to. You know, to allow for is the installation of these evergreen trees, which is not necessary.
I get that, but.
This would be, uh I guess as soon as we get land development approval and uh and uh and do the S modification. For the uh for this, we can move that topsoil out.
I was asking. Please to plan.
Yeah, so our intention is to incorporate um the the final construction of these remaining items into this.
And I I I may have missed a couple of those, what are the remaining items from phase one that are still outstanding, just so it's clear on the record?
Sure, uh construction of the storage units, shown there's forty-six hundred square feet. Of storage proposed on here with the pavement associated with that.
Access.
Uh yeah, access uh trail with access to the back of the property with the bridge. Yeah, and then there's the the landscaping, which is um hopefully no longer gonna be required.
The 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 storage chains were not a condition.
No, they they were, they were shown on the land development plan.
Yeah. Um but the trail is a condition.
Correct.
So really, it's only the trail that that is lack.
For the for the, as far as the conditions for the conditional use, so that's.
Right. Well. I mean. In my mind, I think that that should be isolated from phase two. Cause what if this is phase three and we say we wouldn't trail next time, you know, we're gonna do it next time, I mean. You know, I mean, I think it it, you know, I would prefer that phase one be completed as planned and and as. Demonstrate, you know, explain to us. And we do phase two, I get, you know, the lockers and all this kind of stuff. You know, but. The ancillary improvements that were necessary and a part of a condition. I I prefer that they be kept with phase one and completed, not. Just rolled into phase two.
Yeah.
I can unhook that, you you okay, I don't.
Again, it's not a trail, it's the access that we've been on, the access, those two that the topsoil that's there have, so. I don't know, I don't know if you can.
Well, no, no, not, no, I don't care, you you can do it six months from now or a year from now. I'm just saying that it wouldn't be. A condition of phase two. It stays with phase one.
As it as is bonded right now.
Right.
Right, so we have a, we have a performance bond that is still has some remaining for that purpose, and you're saying keep that tied to that and.
Right.
Right. It could, it could be a condition of phase two, if you want, if you want that done before phase two.
No, no, I I just. I don't wanna keep rolling phase conditions into the next phase into the next phase and, you know. We're in phase five and we're still talking about a toplot, what are we talking about, I mean, I get it.
I mean, if there is a concern, though, of them finishing the trail or the access to the trail, and you don't want them to.
We have bonds on that order, right?
In worst-case scenario, we would finish that access.
Why don't we, are you, are you gonna testify, would you swear him in before he starts talking?
You just sound as if you're affirming to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, thank you.
Just identify yourself.
Anthony Moll. So. We could always. Put in that access to the trail, to the mountain, to the trail, or nature, natural trail, so we're talking about a short access. We could put it in. And it may end up being temporarily disturbed through construction of this second phase, then we'll just reestablish it.
Right.
So we'd do that through cooperation with the township, communication, so that everybody knows what's going on.
Right.
In worst-case scenario, we can still, if we wanna eliminate the bond by having all completion, we'll put it in and take it up.
That's all.
Work with it.
Right.
But I understand your concern.
And we're talking about just the access to the trail.
Yeah, it's an access to the natural, natural trail.
Yeah, so the. The trail requires construction of. This paved area for the storage units, and so until the storage units will be constructed, we can't get access to the trail. This is where the trail starts and then it comes down this way, you know, this this portion of it will be. It will be constructed, but we wouldn't be able to get safe access for the for the tenants until. Until this area.
So the trail itself is in existence, you were just talking about the access to.
No, the the. There's a trail that will be constructed as well, but the access to the trail is through the paved area for the storage units. So there's about about a hundred feet or so um. Of of pavement of the driveway for the storage units that would be constructed for we can gain access to where the trail stems off of.
And the entire trail access and trail are merely to get people to a green space of. Natural woods, wooded areas, so that they're. We're not maintaining or assuming a liability of the natural hiking that's being done in the woods, so initially doing the planning phases of phase one. It was uh agreed that we were trying to get people to a natural hiking area, but not necessarily to provide hiking trails throughout that created space, so. Um as I said, we will continue to make efforts to get this done in advance, and if in another alternative case. If when we go through the planning process of phase two and we prove that it can be the planning commissions and the and the uh council's uh. Desire to maybe tie it to phase two at that point, but you'd consider that at that point, given whatever circumstances we run into during development. This dirt would have been moved off-site, but it was kind of silly to take what we need to fill in this area away from the site and then truck it back in.
Understood.
So two oh nine doesn't need any more traffic.
Well, that was my other question, and it's probably just more of the logistics is that. Um uh you eliminated this this driveway, which I agree. Um. But I think in in the practical sense, would that be used for construction, so you're not. Disrupting tenants in phase one?
That's uh not a bad idea, then remove it, make it a construction access that's part of land development, I guess, planning.
Right, I I know.
Might be a good idea, might be, especially since it's forested, though.
Right.
Um it could take a lot of abuse and might cause the system to somewhat fail, so that's a.
Using existing driveway that's there actually. The driveway right here for the house, whatever, I'm just saying have construction.
Yeah, people often new blocks.
And all of the new parking is purviewed?
Correct.
So phase one, everything, everything is fine, COs, right?
From a building standpoint, a building inspection of those buildings, yeah, they've been completely finished. We haven't gotten final COs or official final COs because. There was, because of the buffer that was to be constructed around what is going to be phase two. So that's kind of a a point of contention right now in that we don't wanna put it in to take it out, and it's holding up our. Final COs, and we're trying to work through that as well, getting the building inspector to understand that we are bonding the improvements and there's not a need to. Call in temporary COs because the building has passed all its safety inspections, its fire uh system inspections, nine-one-one inspections and things like that, so. Um we can address that, I think, administratively.
And then the the storage units have a separate CO.
Correct, yeah.
When they're built.
Yeah, and we can talk about whether they should be built or not be built in phase, in the planning phase of one and two. We start to get some ideas about additional park or some other spaces that might be beneficial to the existing. We start to get some ideas about additional park or some other spaces that might be beneficial to the existing tenants. We're finding that they might like more recreation, so we might, again, we won't abandon it for phase one. But if in phase two it gets approved, this assumption. And that, and that's, those storage units form a part of the infrastructure.
Deb, what do you wish they had? What do you wish they had?
I wish they had.
She's putting it on public property.
Or we'll call you to bring them down when they're.
Well, we uh with the walk ups, uh we have thirty percent of all of these units are. ABA accessible or handicap accessible, which is from a percentage standpoint with all the walkways not having steep slopes. A thirty percent of a project would be able to accommodate the elderly and people who have difficulty walking and stuff is a, pretty, is a very high percentage. And now we moved into other buildings where they're single and they do that elevated or a hundred percent of them. But uh from a safety standpoint, no common floor doors to have to worry about getting to people or their, their front doors or maybe that just to the exterior. So in terms of getting somebody out in a fire situation, probably the quickest and easiest way as compared to having to go into a building.
I'm just thinking of the.
Oh, that, yeah, yeah, that, you know, that's. No, no, I, I. Yeah, I, I, I agree with you.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
I knew you had it, I don't want to chew your tongue.
I thought she was talking about fire, so.
Um and your intent is to consolidate the two lots? Conco- accompany me with your land development application?
In order to meet the density requirement, they must be combined.
Okay, and uh are there any other potential future phases, phases associated with this?
I think right the maximum density at this point, are we not?
For one twenty six and give them the one fifty five.
I don't have any intentions, I think the rest of it's the land unless.
Well, Steve's local.
I don't see that, it's not anticipated, so uh the only thing I guess that could potentially. Be modified would be to convert the storage buildings to some units, but we didn't run the sewer and water lines there. In anticipation of any such thing, so more likely that will be in the minute, so the answer to your question is no additional. Um units are anticipated.
And the only outstanding improvements from phase one are the storage units and the access to the trail that we went through?
So.
And you're not asking for any variance or other zoning relief associated with the zoning ordinance?
No.
You're gonna comply with all the zoning requirements uh of the, of the township?
Yes.
Correct, because those are my options.
Um I was going to give you a total of the current outstanding amount due from the prior land development plan, I don't know if I, do I have that? Is it a sewer bill or? No, it's associated with the uh prior land development application of uh somewhere. Are there two separate ones, Michelle?
Yeah, there's one from sketch and we're at this plan and the other is phase one.
So the outstanding amount due for the sketch plan for phase two, it looks like it's five hundred and fifty dollars, does that sound right, Michelle?
Yeah.
And it looks like the outstanding uh balance for the prior land development application for phase one is eleven thousand four sixty five twenty seven.
Yeah, that would done, we should have probably contacted somebody.
So you're agreeable that that will be a condition of this?
Yeah.
I think that's all I have. And from board? Anything else from the applicant at this point? Okay, any, anyone in the audience?
Yes, I have a question. In relation, in relation to orientation of the other units, is it parallel or perpendicular?
Perpendicular to Mount Nebo. Sir, can you, before we proceed, can you identify yourself for the record?
Uh Brian Miller.
And where do you reside?
Uh twenty eight Mount Nebo Road directly across the street.
Correct.
Brian, we are perpendicular to Mount Nebo Road, parallel to the other buildings that we're constructing.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Saying none, if the board's one and twelve, just so you're aware, we're gonna probably close the public hearing at this point. Uh and this board has forty five days to decide uh the conditional use application and issue a written decision pursuant to the infancy. Uh we'll take that bond, probably not, uh but just so you know, they have forty five days pursuant to them, unless you were to grant an extension if we get the township belt that was necessary. So with that, does the board want to uh consider closing the hearing?
Sure, I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Sure.
Comments or questions, all in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Interviewed your second time, this is, I don't know.
We had so much discussion about the access to the. Uh legal property there. And I assured them that it would help them later on in their town, we had thrown it out three or four days after we lost market. And uh.
Well, that's probably.
Uh.
Really?
Yeah, so they saw that, yeah.
Wow.
I think they made a call to the township about.
Choose your biggest fan for a while.
Yeah. We did it was rather, better to be, better to chase the beach.
Well, we have so much going on with the person, including between senior and water.
We're having to cross through all nine, doing that one, the pump station doesn't, our health worked out. Yeah, we're proud of it, we're uh, we're happy with, you know.
Are you gonna leave applicant five?
Yes.
Your unit used at an office there.
She has a furnished model.
I don't know, where was the beginning of the. Look at him, that's his house on the corner.
Oh, yeah, uh I think it's all part of the. Oh, I mean, I tried to talk to them about. That place is about, when you take the, the right away.
Close the unit, yeah, so uh is there any, before we adjourn, any other public filings? Uh motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Now we can, yeah.
Thank you.